Okay. We're ready to start the next session. Sorry to everyone online, the program is running a little bit late. So thanks for your patience. We're going to get going as soon as everyone in the room settles down. Okay. Right, thank you everyone for joining. This is the last session for the day. After this, there's going to be a planetarium show that's being run by Sally there. So we've been told we can take our full hour and thanks to the people online for understanding. Now, this session, let me get some. So this session now is going to delve into 2024. Right, we've heard about 2024 from various talks. This is the big International Astronomical Union General Assembly. And we often refer to this as sort of the World Cup of astronomy. And it's coming to Africa for the first time in the hundred year history of the I U. The reason that we have this session is that, of course, AFS is a key partner in the, in the organization, in the hosting of this, of this global event in 2024. And we want this event to be an African event. As we bid in the, in the proposal to host this, in the host city of Cape Town, we've always needed this to be an African event. This session is to give you an overview of what's been going on so far. But importantly, it's to engage you, it's to call out to everyone online, everyone here to get involved. And, and hopefully by the end of this session, we'll have specific ways that we'll announce for you to get involved and so that everyone can play their role. And I want to say this, you know, there's this term that was made popular, I think, by the, by the movie Blood Diamond. In that movie, there was this, the saying, you know, they used to say T I A, this is Africa. And they used it in such a negative context. It was used in the context of like, ah, corruption, this is Africa. Ah, you know, things don't work, this is Africa, T I A. The, the, the 2024 General Assembly and the growth of astronomy on this continent represents an opportunity to change that narrative, to change the narrative of like, ah, this is Africa, to yes, this is Africa, this is where we can make stuff happen, this is where we can do things. If we can lead in astronomy, we can lead in lots of different things. This meeting, this, this, this whole growth of astronomy is more than about astronomy. It's about Africa, it's about the people of Africa. And this is, this is the vision that we want all of us to share and all of us to take part in. So with that, I'm going to give it over to my co-chair Vanessa and she'll take you through where we are at the moment. Thank you.
Thanks Kevin, thanks everyone. I'm basically here to give you guys a quick update. We'll talk about the current status, where we are. So I think I last spoke to the community at the Forum for Astronomy in Africa in October last year. So just an update from then. And then the various committees, Science African Outreach will give an update as well. And then we'll have a, an announcement about this call for proposals. So just to let you know who's who, some of us are here in person today. So I'm Vanessa, you've already met Kevin, of course, Carolina is also here, she's in person. Nairouj is online and so is Brad, I believe. Glenda is probably not here today, maybe online. And Eunice, you've definitely seen floating around organizing things in the background. So Nuha is also not in person, but maybe online today. So that's the sort of the team that's been coordinating. But in addition to that, we've got many other people from across Africa and that are represented in the committee. So a close collaboration, of course, with this committee and with the African Astronomical Society. So maybe to remind you of the last time, we had one of these updates, which was in October last year at this Forum for Astronomy in Africa. We had over 430 people who registered to attend. Obviously, not everyone was there at the time, but we had around 100 people attending at any one time. And these people were mostly from the continent of Africa. But there was huge interest also from like people across the globe, not only African diaspora, but you know, people who had an interest in collaborating with us and seeing this meeting become a success. So let me remind you of what some of the outcomes of this forum were. So the, I think the two main outcomes that we took away from us was a snapshot of astronomy in Africa in 2021. And that snapshot is in the form of two-minute video presentations that we invited from across the continent and they were around things like human capacity endeavors. They included new telescopes, they included old telescopes, they included new ideas for infrastructure collaboration. And those are all still on the page on the Forum for, Forum on Astronomy in Africa. So that, that's really a fantastic resource that anyone can go to and sort of have a look, what was the 2021 snapshot of astronomy in Africa? And then the other key outcome was this vision document that we'd sort of been drafting as a community effort. You know, all of us together had input through a Google Doc. And we really used that meeting to collate the different kinds of, of input and then move those into suggestions for action. And so that was version 3.0 of that vision document. And I think you'll see this afternoon where we are on that now, because that is ready to take the next step forward. So it's really exciting building on this foundation from October. For those who haven't heard of the vision document or know what the vision is, it's basically a way of using the General Assembly as a milestone for what we want to achieve with science on the continent of Africa over the next two and a half years. So that's in terms of people, it's in terms of infrastructure, telescopes, you know, networking infrastructure. It's in terms of what are the kind of science-focused areas that we want to endorse. It's what will be the experience of a visitor who comes in 2024 to Africa for the first time. You know, what will be the experience we want them to have? What funding do we need and do we want to make happen through this kind of initiative, meeting logistics? And of course, then in terms of opportunity and legacy, what do we want this meeting to leave for all of us and for our students on the continent of Africa? So I won't go into that, but you can have a look at all the gory details of this document at the URL up there. So this year is really a big year for our planning for G A 2024, because it is also the year of the General Assembly in Busan in South Korea. So you may remember that this was supposed to happen last year, but did not happen entirely due to the COVID pandemic. So there are a few things that are still to be decided. It will either be a hybrid meeting like this one, or it will be a fully virtual meeting. There's some current travel advice, but that changes on a monthly basis. And we hope that by August, there will be no quarantine period so that many people can attend. It's also a really good opportunity as the host continent for the next General Assembly to advertise at both exhibition and of course, also to advertise through this promotional video. And I believe 15 of you have recorded segments and clips for that promotional video. So a huge thank you for your contributions already. Are you going to Busan? Let us know, because we may want to organize something with all of our attendees from Africa around the booth. So the roadmap to 2024 looks like this. This is a one that we actually used already in the past. You can see here we are at the third step along the way, AFS General Assembly in March. And there's many of these kinds of landmark or milestone events along the way to the General Assembly. And there are a whole bunch of ones that we didn't foresee, which are great opportunities to promote the G A. And you can see some of them here that sort of cropped up that we hadn't foreseen. So if you get an opportunity as an ambassador to promote the General Assembly or just to bring it up in, in people's radar, please do that. In terms of logistics, we are now, we have submitted this request for a professional conference organizer to be appointed and that's awaiting approval. Hopefully that will be through in the next week or two. We've been engaging with conference venue and conference organizer. You'll hear more about the exhibitions and the videos through the outreach team. And we've also been participating in these engagements with stakeholders, including like the whole community here. We also have received, and in fact, I think even spent some of the seed funding that we've received from D S I. So just to remind you, that's 10 and a half million rands that was committed over three years for D S I. The priorities for 2022's funding is travel and marketing for the promotion of G A 2024 at Busan. Things like the venue P C O deposits, some scholarships for African students, and also through a call for proposals to implement some actions around the vision. We also have some ideas around fundraising. These are very much still in the concept phase and some of them you can see on the slide that I'm, I'm presenting today. If you have ideas, please get in touch. I think these ideas will crystallize into action once we have our professional conference organizer appointed and we can actually begin to move forward on some of the ideas. So at this moment, I'm going to hand over to Brad Frank, who's online and he will just talk over the, the science, the work of the science committee. So Brad, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, can you hear me Vanessa?
We can hear you, just go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So, so thanks, thanks Vanessa for the introduction. Hi, everyone. So I'm Bradley Frank Bonita and I, we're the co-chairs of the Science Subcommittee for the N O C. And as a reminder, our mandate includes promoting participation and leadership of African astronomers at the G A 2024. It also includes development of flagship concept projects with the aim of enhancing science participation with South African-based telescopes in particular. And also developing a scholarship program, which Vanessa alluded to, using the N O C funding. So going through these, these, these items. So our flagship concept currently includes development of partnership with South African-based data-intensive astronomy data centers. And so the idea is that we create a platform for skills development and scientific research. We've had some advanced discussions with various stakeholders and we hope to receive more funding, especially leverage funding over the, the, the next few coming months to, to commit towards related projects. We also hosted a very successful and informative session during the forum in Astronomy in Africa in October. So as a reminder, the, the scientific program of the G A will comprise science symposia and focus meetings. And so our session included a recap of previous symposia and focus meetings in Africa, of which there've been, there've been many. And as a result, we've had many successful symposia chairs from African institutions. And we also presented an in-depth, in-depth information and insights to the proposal evaluation process, which I think was tremendously useful for our community to understand exactly what goes into setting up a successful symposia, symposium or focus meeting. So the session was also aimed at exploring possible symposia topics that could be hosted by African scientists. This is like obviously in strong collaboration with our international colleagues, but with, with a strong participation and leadership by, by African scientists. So the session included pitches from researchers on symposia about A G N, pulsars, radio transients, gravitational waves, the galactic plane, radio astronomies and X-ray binaries. And the ideas for focus meetings included topics, energy instruments and astrophysics and the study of gas and galaxies principally with the Meier-Cat telescope. And I think the, the, the conclusion and the, the story that we had at the end of that was that there's an incredibly diverse range of science topics that's being represented across African continent. And the idea was that we wanted to consolidate these interest areas. So we, we don't compete against each other when it comes to submitting ideas for symposia and focus meetings. And just as a reminder, the deadline for symposia and focus meetings, I'm sure it's for focus meetings. I'll check for, for simple, sorry, for, for symposia and focus meetings probably slightly different. But it is two years before the, the General Assembly. So towards the end of this year will be the deadline for the submission of symposia. And so as a science subcommittee, we can certainly help, you know, in whatever way we can. We have a good representation of science interest within our group. And so we're able to, you know, participate potentially in the S O C, but also we'll be able to review proposals as an external kind of re, set of reviewers with the idea in mind and with the tips in mind that were presented at the, at the meeting in October. And so more recently, we have received seed funding from the N O C and we have established a master's scholarship that is being administered through South Africa's National Astrophysics and Space Science Program. So the idea is that the eligibility will be open to all qualifying students from across the African continent. And we'll announce a call for limited number of scholarships later this year, so we'll open up applications. And we have identified a qualifying student for 2022 and we definitely aim to increase our numbers over the course of 2023, hopefully leveraging off the funding that we've already gotten from the N O C. So I think, I think that's it for me for the moment. Thanks again for the opportunity to present an update. And please feel free to contact us if you have any ideas or any questions. We look forward to, to hearing your ideas and your comments. Thank you.
Thanks Brad, let me invite Charles to come and tell us about the Africa Committee.
Right, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Charles Takalana, I'm with African Astronomical Society. So just in short, the G A is a continental initiative, needs input from, from, from across the continent. And, and what the Africa Committee is to do is to ensure that all the activities that are related to, to the G A will have input at some level from the rest of the African continent. And, 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 and in doing that, we always interact with, 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 with the other committees through the N O C. And, and that's with the science and, and, and the Outreach and Communications Committee. And, and, and this also helps us in that with, with, with me being at, at, at AFS, help with the rollout and efficient rollout rather of, 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 of the activities and flagship projects that are being planned by the various committees, including flagship projects that we are working on at, at AFS as well. So we may, we, we, we meet on a, on a monthly basis and, and, and I chair the committee assisted by Kevin and, and Vanessa. And we've got representation from various regions on the African continent and also some other very important stakeholders that we, that, that we work with. So some of the things that we started working on is, 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 is on a letter to the African Union so that we can, we, we, we can get more support from the African Union leading up to the G A in 2024. And also, and also, excuse me, and encourage other African countries to join and be part of, 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 of the I U and, and, and also of course, of some of the AFS activities and the G activities leading up to 2024. We are, we are, we, we've also been working on a call for the establishment of, of astronomy centers across the, 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 the African continent or other astronomy hubs. And, and, and this, we are, we are trying to ensure that it will be something that will be sustainable even beyond the 2024 G A, which is, which is why we've been, we've been working closely even with the current AFS Executive Committee and looking towards even working with the next executive committee to ensure that even when, when the call does come out and then it's ready, it's something that will be sustainable even, even beyond 2024. And we're also looking at, 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 at how we, 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 we can encourage more, more, more African countries to, 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 to participate in meetings leading up to 2024. So there's that sort of visibility of what we are doing in Africa and, 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 and ensure that we are, we, we, our, our science is also at a competitive level with, with the rest of the world. We also look at, at, at certain targets that we want to achieve leading up to 2024 and what those obstacles and what the various obstacles might be in, in, in achieving those goals. I mean, thank you.
Okay, Carolina will come and tell us a bit about the work of the Outreach Committee.
Thank you Vanessa, so good afternoon, everyone. You will have seen me before. My co-chair of the Education and Outreach and Communications Subcommittee is Nairouj, who is, has been very active online in this meeting. And so you would like to first present to you the, the Outreach flagship project. So the idea of this flagship project is really to show, to build a model of the solar system on the scale of Africa. So we, so Nairouj has done a lot of work trying to prepare different orbits and so on. And the best way to include as many objects and as, and, and all the countries across continent is to put the sun in Cape Town, where the G A will take place, and then to build it out from there. So every country has very exciting solar system objects going through it. Anywhere from obviously the planets, but also fantastic objects like such as centaurs who are just, you know, now being researched and discovered. And I think that's, that's a very exciting thing, because it shows that the solar system is still being discovered. And even though it seems near and it seems close, which is great, because it really shows that, like astronomy in Africa, which is still developing, it really is close to our hearts and close to all of astronomy, because we're all sharing the same sky and the same solar system. So, so this is what we're trying to do. And Charles just mentioned hubs across the continent. Obviously, we would love for these hubs also to be, you know, to be maybe the, the homes of these solar system objects that would form a scale model on the, on the scale of Africa. And we have fantastic support from the, the African Astronomical Society. So let me just move on to the next slide. So we have incredible synergies with, with AFS as, as this subcommittee. And we're really grateful for AFS's support, because AFS is really the conduit for all of our efforts and how we want to reach out to the continent and reach out and mobilize the continent to celebrate astronomy and, and impress to the rest of the world how astronomy and how Africa are both excellent and especially when brought together. And so one of the things that AFS Outreach Committee has done is put together a map of astronomy across Africa. So this map that you can find on the astronomy website, but also on the, on the Astronomy 2024 website, but also on the AFS website, lists all the amateur clubs, all the facilities, universities. It's really a map of astronomy across Africa. So those are some of the big things that, you know, we're building up that weren't there before, that we're building up, leading up to the G A. We obviously have our Astronomy 2024 website, which is where the information about the General Assembly will be found. So I really encourage you to come and, and use that website as much as possible. We have some social media presence and for that, if there's anything that we could, you know, augment, because we, we're not there as our own organization, we really want to augment the presence and the online visibility of African astronomy, you know, ping us online and we'll do that. And as Vanessa mentioned earlier, we're busy preparing this video showcasing Africa for Busan when the General Assembly is handed over from South Korea to Africa. So again, you know, I've seen some of the people give their, give their greetings to the, to the audience and to the public from, from Africa and welcoming them. And it's, it's absolutely amazing, the messages. You'll see when the video comes out, it's going to be fantastic. And so this brings me to the next thing, which is, so we have this vision that we're working for, right? And for that, we have a, a website. So we've put it online, so I don't know if I should go to the website and just show you a little bit how this is structured. It's in Chrome, right? There we go. So I will just, oh, there we go, there's a. Oh, do I need to exit the presentation for the zoom to see? Okay, that's fine. There we go, and put this full screen. So there we go. So this is the website, the URL is very simple, astronomy2024.org. And we have, you know, news and things as they come up. But the thing is here, we have visions. So if you click on vision, you see that the entire vision is here. We talked about people, infrastructure, science, opportunities and all of these things. So let me just go, for example, to people here. You can click on each of these, it's a little bit like the Sustainable Development Goals, right? So you can click on this and you get to this page where we have all the ideas that were brought together from discussing with the entire African community. And so for example, clearly communicated and abundant scholarship opportunities, that would be great. So you click on that, you get to the, the, the actual page that describes the status of that particular item, the actions that we want to do, potential stakeholders. And this will come to just for now, but then you can click back to visions and you can explore other ones. And then if you click back on people, you go back to the vision website. So similarly with infrastructure, for example, access to computing at universities. Click that, you get an idea of status, challenges, actions and come back. So you will see for each of these, there are some buttons. For example, here, so I think I will just leave that to Kevin to come and describe what these buttons are about. And we'll just put this back on a show mode. There we go, thank you.
Right, thank you very much to, to the, to the team. So, you know, we, we, we said we'll, we'll use the opportunity of this AFS meeting to, to launch this call. And, you know, whenever you say launch, you wonder whether you need to have some sort of like ribbon cutting or some, you know, drum roll or something. So maybe, maybe we should like drum roll on the desks here and, and, and you guys online. I don't know if you can hear that online. But so, so the idea is that we need to achieve this big vision. And part of this, part of this vision, you know, let, let me just see, there we, it didn't come up. Go to the PDF? Part of this, part of this vision is to, is to look at the different ways in which the African astronomical community can benefit from 2024, but also, you know, what we can contribute towards 2024, towards this global, global astronomy endeavor. And, and so on that website, so Carolina showed you the, the web version that, that we have. What we also have from that website, you can, you can download a vision, download a PDF version of it. And just to give you, give you a, a, a taste of what's there. It's, it's a very simple table where you can, you can look at what people have said, what is our vision in terms of, of the different aspects? So for people, what do we want to have, a networked astronomy community? What's the status, what actions are needed and who, who are the potential stakeholders for this? And throughout this document, things like students and early career researchers should have clear paths. What are the actions needed to get us to that vision? Who are the relevant stakeholders involved? And we asked ourselves, well, we want as many people as possible to, to help contribute to realizing these actions. By 2024 and beyond, we need to have all these, these actions accomplished. And how can we achieve that? So we've already had many people volunteer to embark on some of these, and to take on some of these actions. But in terms of, let's try this again, so do I, okay, there we go. So to take on some of these, these actions, what we're launching today is a call for proposals. So you'll find it on the website under Vision 2024. There's a call for proposals related to the Vision 2024 actions. All right, let's just move that bit. Now, this call for proposals is to say, okay, you have some ideas about how you would like to contribute to this. You have something that you're passionate about, whether it deals with, with people, with infrastructure, with outreach. If you have these ideas, send it to us and let's, let's, let's provide the support to implement these. So you'll find a very simple call for proposals. In terms of eligibility, we want anyone anywhere in, in the world to participate, right? This is an open call. Anyone can submit a brief, a brief proposal. In terms of the funding that's available, we'll fund an average or up to, we're hoping to fund up to 20,000 rands per proposal. In exceptional circumstances, if there's a particular idea or a proposal that, that needs more funding to make it happen, that will be looked at on a special case basis, depending on what the deliverables are for that project. But you'll find the selection criteria, the timeline. We'll give a month. We'll open the call today. We'll allow a month for people to submit proposals. The application form is super simple. It's, it's a simple Google form. We want to know which actions from that Vision 2024 you would like to embark on, you would like to take on. Give us an overview of what your idea is, you know, how you're going to implement it and what's the timeline and what you hope to, to, to deliver at the end of this. And of course, give us a budget, any additional motivations, and that's that. Through this call, we want to collect, you know, ideas, actions that people want to embark on across the continent, I mean, across the world. Anyone from around the world can apply, but the benefit should be for the African continent because the, 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 the proposal should be based on fulfilling Vision 2024. So with that, this is online now, is it? Okay, this is now online. You can go to a, a WWW, oh, how do you get back to? Let me just get back to the presentation. Sorry. That one. And so you can go to, to that URL, astronomy2024.org/callforproposals, CFP. And you'll find all the details there. Please talk to your, talk to your colleagues. Let the ideas start flowing. The funding is unrestricted, which means that if you, if you want to apply for funding for your time to, to, you know, so that you can, well, I don't know, buy teaching time or, or, or pay for professional costs or pay for resources, put that in the budget, motivate for it. And we want as many people to get involved as possible to fulfilling this vision. Look, the situation is that it's now 2022. We're one and a half years, no, but yeah, one. Let's make it two years. Two and a half years somewhere. The situation is this, if we do nothing for the next year and we start next year organizing this thing, it will still be a successful event. But why wait? Let's get involved now. Let's put our hands together now and try to get these things going so that in a year's time, when, you know, the, 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 the major advertising and, you know, trying to attract people to attend the GA, register for the GA, when that starts, we must already have everything in place. We must say to people, if you're coming to Cape Town for this meeting, then make a stop over in Ethiopia along the way because this is the opportunities, these are the collaborations you can have along the way. If you, if, if you want to extend your stay and travel to, you know, these four other African countries as part of a joint trip, here's, here's a package for you. So if we get all these things in place, then we can make sure that this event is truly African and that, you know, all existing projects, all your projects, your observatories, your, your outreach education projects should benefit from this, this event. That's really what we want. This event should, should be for everyone's benefit. With that, I'm going to stop talking and let's open up for discussion. Thank you. Let's just say thank you to the team and everyone for putting this together. Right, we're open for, for discussion. We have a, one question in the audience, Taklan?
Okay, thank you for the presentation. How, how much budget in total do you have for this call? I just want to have a sense of how many projects you're going to fund for this. Yes, and then also, how, how does it link with the, is it the astronomy hubs? Or I think the flagship that you were driving also, how do they? Yeah, I think you got my, thanks.
Okay, so taking the, the last question first. So in terms of the astronomy hubs, you would have heard Charles mention from the, from the Africa Committee, these hubs need to be, need to be sustainable. It needs to be something that can be supported in the long term. And for that, we need the support of an organization like the African Astronomical Society. And so at this AFAS meeting, there's going to be the election of the new AFAS Executive Committee. And we want to make sure that that Executive Committee is fully on board. That call for hubs will still go out. It's something that, that AFAS and the GA Organizing Committee have, have already agreed on. But we want it to be something that involves the new AFAS Executive Committee as well. So that will happen a bit down the line as the new Executive Committee of AFAS takes place. In terms of the total amount available, and this is a very pertinent question because the speaker is from the, from the source of funding. The funding that we received from the Department of Science and Innovation, that budget, we had in that budget line items for science activities, for outreach activities and for, and for the flagships. Now, these, the, the, the total amount was intentionally left open to see what the response is from the community. We, we, we have those line items that we will, that we will commit towards, towards the projects that are, towards the proposals that we receive. But at the end of the day, if we get really good proposals and we see that some of the proposals can fulfill the objectives of, of, of other line items. For example, we have a line item for marketing. And if there's someone that comes up with a proposal and says, look, I'm able to produce this amazing marketing materials, then we can redirect funding from, from that budget to fulfill what was in that budget. So, so this is not to say that, that we have unlimited funding, but that we want to maintain the flexibility that this vision document contains everything that we want to do. Our budget that we have at the moment to do all those things, this is a way of expanding the team that actually implements it. So if you submit a proposal and that proposal fulfills what we need to do as the organizing committee, then you'll be brought in and say, okay, here's a grant, implement this, and, and that part of our budget goes towards that. I hope that answers the question. Another question from Alameer.
Thank, thank you, Kevin, for, for the nice presentation. Your last word catches me my attention. I mean, since it is African GA, what, what comes in my mind is that most of the people who are coming to the, attend the Cape Town will come through Ethiopian Airlines. So I think it is better to go, to have a good connection with Ethiopian Airlines to, in the, to fund and to make some discounts. Also Minister of Ethiopia can also support this one. In addition to this, Ethiopian Minister of Innovation and Technology, as well as the DSI now had a big collaboration and MOU to be implemented in place. So taking this into as a stimulus, I think they can have something to support together. I think this is a good, a good way to start collaboration also with our Minister of Innovation, Science and Innovation. That's just a tip up.
No, brilliant, yeah, thanks. Let's get in touch afterwards because that's, that's the kind of, kind of ideas that we need. If we, if we can establish a relationship with, say, Ethiopian Airlines, then, then you can almost imagine a side event happening just before or just after the GA where people flying, people who fly Ethiopian Airways can make a stop in Ethiopia. And, and, I mean, I know it's worked a lot before when, when we visited you guys in Ethiopia. Thanks very much. Let's, 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 it's, it's completely open now. So any questions from online, any questions from, from the audience here or comments? Do you want to, maybe you can have one mic and then?
Okay. It's a question from, from Lawrence Norris. Will there be learner level activities either in person or online during IAU 2024? And also organize excursions to Kanaev and Sutherland, Hammanis, et cetera?
Yeah. Should I answer or do you want to answer that from the Outreach Committee side?
Okay, yeah. I think those are, the answer to that will be yes, of course. And we're working with, we will be working with the, the tourism offices and things to, oh, anyway, to, to plan packages and trips and so on. So we will expose all the science that's happening here and in all the beautiful natural settings in which it happens as well. So yes, and we very much want to involve learners and students and teachers and families and communities in celebrating astronomy in this. So this is very much part of the plan. But also I'd like to invite Lawrence, if he has any ideas, to please get in touch and send them through and maybe reply to the call as well. Thanks.
Great, and I can just add to that, that in our conversations with the professional conference organizer, they have a whole team that looks at tours and so on. And so we'll be putting together packages for tours to the, to the various sites. We have another question here.
Yeah, I, I think I, I would just want to expand exactly on, on those ideas that you had. It's obvious that here we think about Sutherland and Kanaevron as obvious trips to go to, right? Because it's doable in a very short time. But I think in, in building also up what Alamee said, I think we should very early on offer potentially these trips that go to different countries, have different packages. Because usually go to one country and then explore what's there. But to make it really more and to have people really experience more of Africa, we should indeed, you know, we heard the talks about different observatories, Marrakesh, closer by, yes, that's not so difficult maybe, still a trip. But you know, to, to offer different packages because indeed it's most likely to do that coming in or going out or in between, to hop, even though we don't have that many hopping connections into African countries, but maybe something can be set up. And I think that would be ideal. And the other thing that I would like to say is that what is usually very important talking about these learners, but also young students, is to, to offer them to be able to participate, but do activities as volunteers and to have quite a bit of funding available for that. And I think, I think here we should not think about local people, but bringing African learners interested in STEM careers to do this kind of work. Because usually we hand this over to, you know, either undergrad students or master students and will scrap their registration fee. But indeed, as a stimulus, you know, bring that. And then I think we should have a booklet, something that expands with beautiful pictures on kind of the article that was made, prepared by the team, by Mirjana, about what is really available in observatories? What is the location? What else can you do there, right? Astronomers like to travel. And what can, what else can you visit? You know, something like that would be incredibly stimulating. And people need that at least, you know, you say two years. It's too late to start in a year because this has to be set up a year before people decide if they want to come and, and combine it. Oh, sorry, I'm too far away. That's too late now.
Okay, I hope, I hope everyone heard, heard most of that. It might have been a little bit low, but, sorry, can you stop sharing the screen? Then people can see the video and we can just point the camera at, at any of the speakers. So I hand here, Abdul Majid. Oh, sorry, I saw him first, but.
Thank you, Kevin. So you say that we want all African country benefit from this meeting. So can you hope through this, this meeting, we hope that initiate the idea of a large telescope African? So we can, all, all, all astronomer, all African astronomer can, can use it. Thank you.
Okay, that's a, that's a good idea. So, so you mean use the opportunity to launch a large telescope or, to build a new telescope some? Okay, no, great. So, so, so there's a section on that vision document on infrastructure. And it's a, it's a, it's something maybe we can, we can talk about in terms of the need because are there existing large telescopes that can be shared, for example? And, and maybe, maybe David can mention something about the African optical network as well when you comment. Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So maybe David can comment on that as well as your question, yeah?
I think we need to walk, crawl before we run. So I think the first thing we have to do as a continent is link ourselves with our existing facilities. And we do have those. And there is a flagship proposal, which is called the African Integrated Observation System. So I think that's an obvious thing to start with because it's not necessarily a large amount of funding that would be required, which say building a 10-meter telescope in Africa would be quite a tall order. I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't aspire to that, but I think starting with what we have is probably the best way. I just wanted to pick up on what Renee was saying about involving students. And I think a number of us who attended the last GA in Vienna, you know, we were aware of the fact that there were a lot of student interns that were taken in for that period from all over Europe and possibly beyond. So, you know, that's something which I think we really should try and do, bring students from the rest of Africa here and put them up and, you know, cover their costs and, and so on. Yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Let's maybe, do you have a quick one before?
I have a very quick one and that's about launching something as well as, you know, could it not be that, I mean, a telescope is great, but I think it's expensive and hard to do. But, you know, with all those plans about astro stays, could we not launch like 20 astro stays in Africa by 2024 on the, at the start of the GA? That would be such a nice goal.
Yeah. Ah, sorry about that, Prosperi. Let's take Prosperi first, then, then Mirjana, then, then Selma. You unmute Prosperi?
Yeah, thank you. My first comment, my first thing is a comment regarding the scholarships that are made available. I just have a suggestion. We have a scholarship program under the Pan-African Planetor and Space Science Network, which runs up to 2025, where we are supposed to give up to about 65 scholarships. So I was thinking, since it is also an African initiative, it's only available to African participants, maybe we can, we can also list it on the website as part of the available scholarships. And actually, we have a call currently open for scholarships. And actually, we have a call currently open for scholarships. The closing date is 31st March. So all students that want to apply for PhD or masters, either as full time or just to to go for a mobility of six months or 12 months, they are free to apply. I'll be able to to share that call to the organizing committee so that it can be distributed to all the participants.
Yeah, that would be great. Thanks very much, Prosper.
Yeah. The second one is the possibility of engaging African zones or economic zones such as the SADC, ECOAS, COMESA, and so on, if they can also maybe in some way participate in the in the in the funding and organization of the GA. I don't know how that would be. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I think maybe maybe through some of the relationships that that the Department of Science and Innovation has with with the with the regions, we can get advice from them as well. But I think that's a good point, to get SADC, ECOAS, and so on involved. Okay, thanks for thanks for that, Prosper. Can we go to to Mirjana?
Yes. Thank you. Well, I was I'm really impressed with all the work that has been done. So first of all, my congratulations. I was aware of the vision document, how it was progressing. But you did a great job with putting everything together and launching the call. So really, congratulations. I think it's excellent. And when you were going like through different sections, actually, each of these is one letter of interest for the African strategy that we spoke about yesterday, no? Honestly, each of these can be converted into one letter of interest and where we are, where we want to go, no? So we could actually use the database that is also already there for the for the African strategy. And the question is, do you have the list of the names of all the people who already participated in drafting this? So that then all of these people can go as authors of the of the white papers and strategy? So that because this is already very, very valuable information. So that that's the question around, you know? And one thing that we could also, I mean, suggestion that I would have is that let us see how successful will be the call for proposals. But let's say that hopefully you will get, there will be in one month a burst of proposals that, you know, you get such a big feedback and then you might find yourself that there are so many great ideas and, you know, you you need more funding, you know, to support that. I think this is a great opportunity to actually engage more the others, the institutions, other societies, and so on. So they can provide, you know, like a small seed funding, you know, and then make become a part of that vision through the support that can be offered, no?
Yep.
So not necessarily all the funding has to come from what you currently have. But actually, it's a great opportunity for fundraising, you know, for fundraising for for the for the General Assembly because then you have something in the hands, no?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then for the astro stays, I like your idea, Renee. And actually, I think we shall do 54 because that's how many countries we have. Or at least if we do half of it, then to reach those countries where we don't still have professional astronomers, no?
Yeah.
So that that can be one of the activities of, I mean, one of these visions that we put how to reach all the countries. Well, astro stays could be one of the
Yeah, absolutely.
activities planned for, starting the astronomy where astronomy is still not there.
Great. Yeah, no, absolutely. Just to just to respond, so on the on the letters of interest, it was actually a very open document. So we don't have a record of who contributed what because, you know, it was done sort of in a in a very open way. People sent in submissions along the way and in the Africa Forum as well. It was, you know, in an open discussion like this, people contributed. So, yeah, I think it'll be hard to get names for people. On the on the on the call and the and the opportunity to provide funds, thanks for mentioning that. I should have I should have mentioned it in response to the first question is that one of the one of the motivations that we discussed as well was that if we have these proposals in hand, then we can actually go to an institution and say, look, here's a proposal. They're only asking for this amount. Can't you support them? So so thanks for that, yeah. Okay, let's go to Selma.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And then Tolu next.
Yes, I would like just to yes, I would like just to give a suggestion about communication and ambassador. And I think in in Africa now we have some communities like Arabic community, French community. And I think it will be a good idea to to ask to ask their community to be ambassador like l'astronomie.
Africa.
And and also for the Arabic community to do ambassador for the GA 2024.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to comment quickly, Carolina, from the communication side?
Thank you very much for that, Selma. It's a it's an excellent suggestion. We really want to partner with everyone because we are not an isolated. I mean, you've seen us, we're all involved in other things. This is something that we do that we really want to to rally the African community around. So thank you for that suggestion. We would be very happy. We are, we have work in progress in the sense that we are hoping to produce resources as the project advances that people can use, whether it's slides, there's a logo, there's, you know. And if if people organize, publish things like Astronomy Afrique or if people want to organize events or whatever, they can put that logo on there and and refer to the refer to the to the to the website and whatever central point of information. And we will also then publish information about, look, there's an article here, there's a there's a there's a journal here, there's an e-zine here, there's an event here and so on. Because we really want to to, yeah, to connect all of astronomy across Africa.
Great.
And so, yeah, thanks.
Thanks very much. We have one question here. Tolu?
It is not a question, just a suggestion. To have a big vision, I think the project itself, the 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 project vision will answer many things. But for the fund and for the possible inclusion of many things which can accommodate Mirjana, Alamike, and Takalana's idea, I think if you can market AU, I don't know if you have some representative to market and also each country's media, a way to address the idea, I think it is better to inculcate more.
Yeah, absolutely. Charles, you want to you want to respond about the engagement with the AU?
Sure, so we are going to be engaging with the AU. We'll be doing that through the Department of Science and Innovation. And just one other thing that's rather been more more delayed anything is that you might have, most of you might know that the New African Commission has just come in this year and and they've been setting up the 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 office. So once we get a go ahead from from Africa desk that we we can continue with with the intention and the letter, we'll just go ahead and and submit it to the office. Yeah.
Great. So we're gonna start rounding up now. So if you have any other comments or questions, let's try and get it in before we close. Are there any comments or questions on the on the chat? Ah, okay, you want to just mention them for the audience here?
So there was a comment about a new airstrip that is, I think, potentially opening in Victoria West. So that's good to know. I had no idea about that. We should make travel into places like Knav and and Sutherland much easier. And then there was also a question about the conference organizer would, and I think the status of that is that we are in the process of appointing somebody. So we have a selection, but we don't actually, they're not officially appointed. We maybe expect that within two or three weeks.
Okay.
As everyone is here and since we're just launching this call today, I would like to ask our community if you are willing to translate this call for proposals. And I think the the key languages we're looking at would be French, so I can help with that. Also Arabic and and maybe also Portuguese. But if we could if we could have other languages for the, that would be amazing and would be more than happy to put those online. So thank you.
No, great, that's a good point. Thanks for highlighting that. You'll find under the under the eligibility in the call for proposals, the actual review process will be done in English. But if we can have the call translated so that we can use volunteers, if we can, across Africa, so that anyone who wants to submit a proposal can submit it in their language and then we sort of figure out the interface between the review panel. Okay, let's time to round up. Do you have a burning last comment?
I was just thinking about Brad's comment and preparing for letters of intent and 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 proposals. First of all, the focus area meetings is is exactly the same deadlines. But also, since I've done exactly that job of reviewing symposia, propose on focus meetings for six years as Vice President, I'm happy to assist with that.
No, great, thank you very much. So we've we we need to make use of of all our our colleagues on the continent. With that, I'm gonna I'm gonna now round up. Vanessa, you have any any closing words that you want to say? The call is open. Just remember, this is now a way that you can specifically say what you can do, what you can contribute to, even if you don't need a budget. We encourage you to still submit a proposal with a zero budget if if you don't need the budget. But at least we will be able to organize and coordinate who is doing what across the continent to contribute to a common vision. So with that, thank you very much, everyone, and I'm handing it back to Charles.
All right, thanks, thanks, everyone. So I'm just gonna do a few announcements. So this is particularly relating to those that are in person. And there's a general announcement that affects everyone, which is about Friday. So I'll start with Friday first, right? So last night with the membership committee, if you have gone on on our website, you would have seen that there's a list of all FS members. But last night, we just completed the last batch of membership applications that we had before the GA on Friday, and we'll be updating that list tonight. Now, very important is that in order to be part of the GA on Friday, you have to be a member. So if you've been on the FS website, you'll see that there's no link for Friday at all, right? So what we're going to do tonight is that everyone that is now a member will get an email asking them to register to be part of the Zoom session, right? Whether you are in person or or you or or you are or you're attending here physically, you need to first register on that Zoom link first so we know that you are a member. Then all of those that are registered on that link, right, will then be the ones that receive the procedure for the voting on Friday, right? So for those that are attending virtually, they'll they'll they will then receive on Friday a link to access the Zoom session on Friday. And everyone generally now will then, that that is that is that's now registered for that Zoom meeting, including those attending in person, will also receive the link for the voting process, right? Okay, I hope I hope it's clear this. Yeah. You cannot share any of the links with anybody because that no, the the link to register, no, you can't share it. So you remember that you will only receive an email only if you're a member. So therefore, any communication that you receive today is for you and for no one else, right? And any other communication you receive is just for you. Yes, Zara? Yes, I I I will make it ready that email today that only members are joining us on Friday, even for the voting. And we will highlight all the all the steps and 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 procedure for Friday in that email later today. Now, just for today is if if anyone is going to need transport to go to Iziko, that they can just follow me outside and 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 I'll show you to Mochizi and and to the vehicle that you can use. All of those that are staying at the hotel, use the same transport that you came with when you came here. And we'll see everyone else that's the head person at Iziko.